Chief Culverall.
Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Holstead.
Here.
Council Vice President Chad Grassel.
Here.
Council Members Clarence Vetter.
Here.
Mike Parkshavinsky, Tim Riappell.
Here.
Henry Twetton.
Here.
Mark DeMers.
Present.
This is Turnham Corum. Number one, consider approving the following on sale weekday and on sale Sunday liquor license applicant renewals. American Legion Post 157 located at 1009th Central Avenue Northwest, Little Bangkok located at 415 Second Street Northwest Suite 1, Casa Mexico Restaurant located at 11214th Street Northeast, and Boardwalk Bar and Grill located at 415 Second Street Northwest Suite Number 2. Is there a motion? Both. Who better than that? Second by Twetton. And yes, my understanding they're all current and up to date and everything, so.
Compliance and.
Yep. Any else have any questions? See none, roll call please.
Holstead.
Yes.
Grassel.
Yes.
DeMers.
Yes.
Vetter.
Yes.
Riappell.
Yes.
Twetton.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Motion to adjourn.
Both.
Both by Twetton, second by Grassel. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All in same sign, motion is carried and meeting is adjourned. Call to order the city council work session for CDV's Grand Forks for Tuesday, May 22, 2018. There's now 501. Please call what segment, please call roll.
Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Holstead.
Here.
Council Vice President Chad Grassel.
Here.
Council Members Clarence Vetter.
Here.
Mike Parkshavinsky, Tim Riappell.
Here.
Henry Twetton.
Here.
Mark DeMers.
Present.
This is Turnham Corum. Number one, presentation on survey results. Mr. Gordy.
Last week, the AE2S presented the results of the survey to the EDA. They are bringing forward the results today to the city council because they were interesting and because we think the city council might appreciate getting the information. A Taylor from AE2S is here today. She caused a handout that you are touching right now, the one that's in the plastic cover. And then there's another version of the same material that is there for the department heads. So if I may, I'll turn this over to Taylor so she can talk about the results.
Hi, I'm Taylor and I'm with AE2S like Paul said. If you have any questions at all when I'm going through this, I'm basically just going to be walking through the handout, so feel free to interrupt me at any time. So getting started, we determined as a team that we wanted to do a survey for this specific project, and the reasons behind that were we wanted to engage the community and let them know that East Grand Forks and the East Grand Forks EDA was listening to what they had to say. We wanted an understanding on the quality of life issues that were going on in the community, as well as understanding what the citizens are proud of in the community. Another thing that we noticed in the strategic plan was there was housing issues and land available, so we wanted to get a pulse on the housing needs. Overall, this was informing our plan for the EDA and helping us create a strong and authentic brand. So when we look at some of the results, we had approximately 200 respondents, which we were happy with, and it was pretty close female and male demographics. When you look at the ages that were taking the survey, it was mainly that 26 to 65-year-old resident, which we were happy to see because over 66 and the 18 to 25 wouldn't really be who we would target with this campaign. So then when we look at the respondents, as most of you would know, living here, a large majority of the people grew up in the community, and if you look at the graph, most of the people that took the survey lived here for over 25 years. And when we looked at where they were employed, over 50% worked in Grand Forks, but it was followed by 30% living in East Grand Forks. When we looked at housing, you can see that most of the people here purchased slightly over 90% of them, and the only people who were not renting were over 66 years old. And when we looked at the ages, we saw that 26 to 35 are not building homes, so they wouldn't be in the target of buying those lots, more so they would be in the purchasing homes. And over 78% purchased home and 12% building, so the national average is 6 to 10%, and this is slightly over, which is totally fine as well. When we asked why they chose to build or live in East Grand Forks, a majority of people said that they grew up in the community again, and they also mentioned the family connections. Second to that was really interesting was that it's most cost-effective in the region. Approximately 31% of respondents are planning to stay in their home to one to five, from one to five years. We asked them in a follow-up question why they were not staying, and it was mainly a sizing issue, either outgrowing their current home or planning on downsizing. And you can see that in that graph below. You may also see that the other bar is high, and a lot of those respondents just didn't skip the question. They were planning on staying here regardless. Another housing needs issue we wanted to see was what type of housing is needed here, and it's a fairly common trend that we're seeing is that it's those starting home entry-level homes. And so over 87% of people responded that single-family housing was needed, and of the people that noted multifamily housing was needed, 41% said townhomes specifically. And then that was followed by mixed-use homes or senior assisted living. Then we also wanted to ask some open-ended questions to get that real authentic what people say, what comes to mind, and we were really excited to see that when you looked at these results, people were truly caring and taking their time to fill out these answers. So when we asked what's the greatest challenge to moving or building in the community, the overwhelming answer was affordability. And if you look at the word cloud on the top, this pulls the most common words that people were saying. So you can see taxes are an issue when people are moving here. And some of the other answers combined affordability with housing.
So in other words, on the word cloud, the bigger the word is, the more important it was, the more often it showed up.
Not necessarily most important, but more often people were saying it. So some of it, and you'll see in the following slide, it's a little bit skewed if a person kept repeatedly saying it in their same response. But for the most part, yeah, it's a good way to see what comes to mind right away. So the next one we asked was what's the greatest asset of living here? And there was really, really, really great feedback, and people were saying that it's the tight-knit, family-friendly community, and there's a small-town feel which is appealing. Another thing that people are really proud of here is the schools, and that was mentioned by nearly 21% of respondents. We also asked them to rate different amenities and things that are available in East Grand Forks, with one being the worst and five being the best. And all of the options were ranked higher than a three or being neutral. The school system again was mentioned as the top, while medical and essential services were the lowest. The next question we asked was just kind of a general, what comes to mind when you think of East Grand Forks? And the really exciting thing about this is it's all, for the most part, positive words that you see in big, like it's friendly, it's the culture, the small-town feel, it's safe. Things like little, big town and Minnesota nice were also mentioned. One of the things you may see is good old boy. It usually catches people's eyes. And like I mentioned before, that's the one that somebody had repeatedly said. It's important because they feel that way, but it's not necessarily the whole community thinking that. So that's kind of a quick overview of the survey, and we just wanted to tie in how this informs the marketing plan. So it adds color that's authentic, and it confirms what's been identified in the SWOT and EDA strategic plan. It helps us make informed decisions that we can back with data, and it helps us understand what is important to homeowners and potential homeowners from specific age groups and how we can target them. It also gave us some tidbits of precious information that we may not have gotten. Some of the specific things people said in the survey were Minnesota has the best regional incentives for veterans, and there's a big dislike for living in North Dakota. There's, people love Minnesota and that's something that East Grand Forks should be proud of. And there is a strong desire for wanting your kids to grow up in the same place that you grew up in and have those same things available to you. So the last question we asked was where people are getting their information about East Grand Forks? And as you can see, social media rose to the top. This is kind of common today. Scary fact is two-thirds of people get their news from Facebook for the most part, and one-third of people in the United States get almost all of their information from Facebook. So some people are kind of scared by that because it can be a little bit skewed, but we created a Facebook page to have a place to get the EDA's information out there, and it was also why we did it right away was to help us get the survey in front of people. And from the same graph, you can see that the website is the lowest place where people are getting their information. This can be for a variety of reasons, but one thing we found when we were trying to look around and get more information right away is that sometimes it can be hard to find things, and that is very important when you look at creating websites, that you make it easy to find what information people are looking for. And some of you may have run into other problems or know more about that. We also, for this question, showed how different ages are receiving information, and we broke up ages for all the different questions. But it's interesting to see, and it shows how different generations see their information. So you can see the younger ages, social media is the top, well, social media is the top for everyone, but for ages 46 to 55, the newspaper follows as the, where people are getting information, but you can see as you go down in age that that isn't true as much anymore. So it shows us how we can target our message a lot deeper. So this is helping us take the next step into branding. We've seen how East Grand Forks describes themselves and what is important to the community, and what we do to get a brand and something that's authentic is we kind of group what people were saying. It usually falls into about three different things, so what people say about the place or the geography, and then what people think about the people here or the personality, and then as just kind of life in East Grand Forks, so maybe the school or something like that, and we will get an authentic message that will be able to describe the community.
As Taylor pointed out, there were 201 respondents. One of the questions that came up at the EDA was there were some negative remarks. Was this a lot of people saying that, or how many people were mentioning negative remarks? When AE2S went and did some research, they found there was one person who made negative remarks and 200 people who made positive remarks.
You guys have any questions at all or comments? Appreciate it, sir.
Thank you, Taylor.
Yep, thank you.
Move on to number two discussion and a report from Red River RC Flyers. Mr. Stennis.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm Tom Stennis, and the report, I think we'd read a long time ago, on an annual basis, kind of giving you guys a report for what we're doing out there, so thank you for supporting us and letting us get started and so on. I think we've done real well. We've got a pretty good group, and we've taken and done what we can with the site out there, and we're growing, and we're starting to involve the public a little bit more in engaging them. And I think that report just given was, I thought, very, very interesting, why people live here. And I think that's what the purpose of what I'm doing is trying to add just one little notch in. I've won the belief that the way I run my businesses over the years was that everybody conducts funerals and I conducted funerals, but what the difference was the little things and doing right. We may not be like Grand Forks or some of the big towns or have all the big things, but we can have a lot of little things, and I think that report was very good showing that we've got to keep at that a little bit, whether it's a Frisbee thing or it's a RC airplane thing or whatever. It's just another one of those little things that make people want to come to this, this town and live here. It's a small town, it's nice, we've got this. I think the opportunity we have continuing on is, there's even economic side to what we're doing a little bit. We've got the airbase out there with all the things they've got, yeah, Atomix, General Atomix out there in North Dakota. We've got the aviation out at the airport. We've got UND, we've got a lot of private people that are trying to work on what to do with all these drones and things like that. We may not get all the big stuff, but I think we can do quite a bit. In fact, we're on the radar a little bit. The gentleman that runs General Atomix, he runs the operation in California here, he's been out, he found our site finally, come out there, flew some RC airplanes. Most of those guys are tech savvy, you know that. We have some key people from General Atomix or North of Durham that are out there playing around and doing things, and they design their own stuff and they're out there flying and just enjoying it. So I think it's another point of recreation. The problem we've got, I think, is at this point, we've grown to a point where we need to move on a little bit, and that's what we're looking from you guys now, support again to go forward a little bit. The site we chose out there, we kind of moved in there and got set up because you had to figure out what's the heart, the horse in the cart here a little bit, and we did get going, and we have a viable group. We've started, we even had a training session for, how old was that boy the other day? 11 years old? 11 years old, and got him up in the air, and we're hoping to do a little more of that. Ties in some of the STEM things at the school. I think we've got a great school system and we've got some other organizations that might, we'll get to, but we've got to keep growing and get there. We're not quite there yet. So we'll work on that part. I think the city council has an opportunity to work with us and let us develop a little bit more. There's even some opportunities out there on the economic side too. Some of these places, airspace is pretty tied up in North Dakota side. I think you still could grab a few low-hanging fruit if you want to work on it a little bit, and I could visit with people about that in the future here a little bit or off here a little bit. But we would like to move to a new site along where on. It's adequate to get us going, it's trees all the way around. Vents wouldn't bother us doing some lagoon sort of thing there a little bit, but we'd have to do a lot of more development out there. We've got a regional pattern flying, precision flying thing coming up. We're not able to hold here close to it in Old Castle, I mean, was it about two weeks? I think we're going down for that. Some of these guys got $3,000 to $5,000 planes, but they won't put it in on our runway with all the trees and stuff and the turgids and things, they're precision flying themselves. So we're going down there and having that. They've come from about, I think, five states, one province, I think, coming to that, and so we're co-hosting that sort of thing. And I'd like to have that up here. It brings in, I don't know, 30, 40 people probably, and spend the weekend. It all helps a little bit. It's not a big item, but it's just one of those little things. And what we'd like to do is propose for you guys is we'd like to move to a place where there's no trees, and we've got some level ground, and we've got a little more airspace to move over, and we're not interfering with anything. In the packet I gave you last week, I think you all got, it kind of shows that a little bit over on the east side of River Road there, there's 385 feet there along there that the city has purchased, and we'd like to have a segment of that and put some money into it. And one of the reasons we're here is we thought, we're willing to put money in. We haven't asked for any money from the city, and we haven't taken any money from the city. The only help we got is the payloader came by and picked up some more garbage one day, and that was about it. But I'm hoping in the future, if we get going and you see some benefit to them, maybe we can get some in time and maybe even some other else in a little bit, depends how it goes. Going to that other site there would allow us to develop it. We do have some money aside, and we're willing to put in somewhere $3,000, $5,000 there to help us develop it a little bit. But if we're going to do that on the site, we want a little bit of commitment from you guys, yeah, we can stay there. We don't want to be there so many months and all of a sudden say, wow, we decided that you guys got to go. So we're looking for you to put a little skin into the game, give us permission somehow to go ahead, spend the money there, and we're going to, we're going to work with you guys and let you go a little bit. So from there, I guess I'll ask for any questions.
Mr. DeMers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tom, I don't, I know this is a recreational club. For those people that have like Section 107 licenses.
Yes.
Is there any mandatory flight hours? Or do they, you know, if you get your, I don't know if it's good for two years or three years or how long your license is good for, do you have to fly a certain amount of time within that? Do you know?
With, under the 107 or under our license?
Under the 107.
Okay.
Do you know?
I'm going to ask you guys a little bit.
No, under Part 107, there's no requirement for continual education kind of thing where you have to fly all the time.
I was just wondering if.
You have to recertify every two years.
Every two?
Some of that's pretty fluid too out there. The FAA is struggling to try and keep up with this whole industry.
Right. I just wonder, obviously there's a recreational portion to this, but I wonder as people, more and more people have that Part 107 license, if they're going to require people, just like any other licensure that the state ends up granting, they require you to have a continual education or continual, at least like logged flight hours or what, but.
Not necessarily this time, but I think you guys had a unique opportunity this winter. I wasn't here at the time, but you went on that tour, did you, the airbase?
Yep.
And I think that, that didn't open your eyes, I don't know what else is going to open them, because that is a lot of stuff going on. Not all of this out there, I hope the public has a grasp of what's going on, and that's only the military side. There is the same sort of thing that's happening on the private side with all kinds of uses for it. I do know there's people that are teaching, just like, telling them, we're going out there now, teaching and growing technology. Example is the firefighting. We had a couple of warfighters up north there. They're working on technology. They park a drone up there and you can watch it hit right where that fire is, with all the smoke and stuff, they have trouble figuring that out. Those classes have taken place in some of these towns already. There's a lot of stuff there that's going on out there. Any other questions?
Mr. DeMers.
What sort of term are you looking for? You'd like some kind of a time commitment. What were you hoping to see there?
Well, I put in the thing in there, I, I'm not sure. You know, the first agreement we had was let's go three years and I report to you each year and see where we're at, and that's kind of where we're going now. If we put down, I know we're going to spend about five grand on it. I don't know where that comes, maybe, maybe you're looking at five years. You guys can do whatever you want anytime. I mean, we're at your whim. I realize that you could just make a vote and we're gone, and that's the way it's going to be. But I still like a little commitment, you feel a little better about it, that this is where we're working towards. There's nothing, I don't want any contract that's going to hold you. You can't do that to me, you know, I can't do that to you, or you want to back and forth. Something like say, hey, I'm sure five years would be solid, maybe five or a little. I think at first we looked at three years, you guys are going to take a look at three years and see if you're going on the tree. And I'm saying, we're going to put some more skin in the game here, and then put some money down. What we do is nothing that'll build permanent, but it's still putting up safety fencing, just going to put some fabric, roll it out there ground, you've got to spend a lot of time getting it flat and even nice, and move the fabric out, get some grass planted, get it really smooth and stuff, and we're doing all the mowing, we take care of all that, we solved your problem out there of vandalism. I think we kept up our end of the bargain a little bit.
I wonder from the department heads if we anticipate any need for it in any given timeframe, any need for that area? Any of the department heads want to weigh in on that?
I don't, I guess I don't see any need for it after we're done decommissioning our ponds and stuff. It was for the purpose of, I guess it was just too wet there as our ponds were functioning. It's gotten better now because we have grain tile around them, so even right now, it's not as wet as it used to be, though once the ponds are gone.
Chief Carson was discussing the fire train facility that could be in that same general area, but I really don't think it could be a conflict, the emalter space that they were talking about needing would be a problem, you know, oversharing the fiscal range and all that, it's working out just great.
I think there's some real opportunity in that ground out there, recreational-wise and some educational-wise, and some things that you don't necessarily want to have in a residential area that you could put out there and think about the development of it a little bit. I guess the good area for us going on the east side of River Road there is airspace space is not covered under anything, and we use that, and we'll fly over quite a bit. We just want to stay away from the eagle's nest, we want to stay away from the power line, we want to stay away from trees, and we want to fly over the top of people. And that allows us to do that out there. Farmland is generally what they fly over the top of. I think the other thing we're doing too is I made contact with Park and Rec here the other day, and I think as we go down the road and we start working with interacting more with public, we're probably going to switch a little bit from JCP once site development over to Park and Rec a little bit, and we'll push them up a little bit. We do want to keep, I guess what I say, keep it to ourselves a little bit with the AMA and the insurance and things like that, that's what we can bring to the table, it's that $2 million policy for the city that's a primary. And if we do that, you know, we're kind of walking this line like that sort of thing. We can't have people out there flying it, you know, by the rules. We have airspace above us that we have to be concerned with, there's a lot of flights in and out of the airport, and anybody applies in our areas. The rules that we have are, talked about the 107 and stuff like that. We're in the legislation yet, they keep changing things, but we are. They're going with a community-based organization, and the FAA is recognizing that and recognizing the rules that we've been flying for 50 years with and not having any problem with airspace or accidents, and I think it's a good way to go yet.
I think to kind of go along with what Mark was getting at, or I think what he may have been getting at, was with the Part 107 pilots like myself, I mean, we want to fly legally, we want to fly in an area that's deemed appropriate for that flying, because I don't want to mess around and get in trouble and then have the FAA come down on me. And I think there's going to be more and more 107 pilots throughout this region, and having these airspaces like this set up is the great place for them to be able to go to.
One other thing I'd interject a little bit to, and maybe towards you, Steve, is we have been approached by private people, companies or whatever, that occasionally would want to use this if we, these are unmanned things like that, and we have to consider this a little bit, and that's something that maybe one on one, we're nowhere near doing anything like this. But that's the economic side of it a little bit, that the city could, should think about a little bit. Airspace is really well-used around here, and every little drop counts. There are people, well, I don't think I'm at liberty to say anything more yet, but it could be coming down the road, I may see you on Thursdays. Anything else for you?
Thank you, Mr. President. There's one other thing, you alluded to it a little bit. On that corner, there's a known eagle's nest. Is there setbacks? I know when you do construction, you have to account for that, especially if it's coronal engineers' construction, but how do we, how is that managed, or is it because it's a?
I don't know, there's a law that says we can't, but we don't want it over there. We don't want the trees, first of all, so stay far away from it.
I just.
We'd be quarter mile.
Half mile? That's the, that's as close as you can be?
Well, that's how far we'll be. We're going to be on the half-mile line, so even if flights are a quarter mile, it doesn't matter.
Right, because you go 2,500 feet or 1,250 feet or?
If you haven't seen the videos, eagles will take a drone out of the air, so.
All right, sir, anything else? Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Move on to number three discussion on updated paving estimates. Megan's on there, but we'll let Steve and Megan take it.
I guess I'll just start by saying I know the council received in the packet updated concrete and asphalt paving estimates for the lot next to the FW. I know the requests have been made for like a crushed granite as well. Mr. Emery, I will touch on this a little bit. We do not really have that material available in the area, but he did put a bituminous millings estimate together for you guys to look at, and I'll let you take it from there.
Thank you, Megan. So again, I think everyone's probably had some time to kind of review the estimates for the, you know, the concrete paving and asphalt paving, you know, both of them, pretty good investments for the community. So I did, actually just today, had talked to a local contractor, and the idea of just utilizing some bituminous millings came up. I think in the long run, it'll, you know, it'll give you a good durable surface, pretty weather-resistant. You're not going to have the problems with the millings, you know, like you do with crushed concrete gravel sometimes when it does get wet, it kind of, you know, kind of get muddy. So I did put together an estimate to do that. You know, we're looking at probably about, you know, 26,000 in construction, but there is some items in there still that, you know, we may not even, at that point, if you're just looking at doing bituminous millings, you know, maybe, you know, maybe you don't even worry about the striping. I'm not sure how that would even hold up with the milling, so, you know, maybe you could just delineate your, you know, your parking spaces with parking bumpers and such, but, you know, so there is some cost in that estimate again that, you know, may, you know, we. know, we may be able to take out, but I guess when you, you know, when you look at it, 26,000 versus, you know, even just doing the, just the asphalt, you know, we're at about 73,000, so we're about a, you know, a third of the cost, so I think it's really a matter of what I think you guys want long-term.
Make sure that if the city or someone else is going to do a parking lot, you require it.
Like Peterson Vet Clinic came in, we would require that to be a hard-surfaced parking lot that has sufficient drainage and is striped to accommodate their customers. So I would hope that if we're looking at doing that parking lot, or going to work with someone else, that we would meet our own requirements that we would require of someone else. And that, that's the only thing I'm saying.
Yep.
Now, however you do it, I just want to make sure that we're following the requirements that I would request of a different type of business, so.
Yeah, and I mean, you know, in the estimate right now, I did put, you know, basically doing some grading, you know, that type of work, so we would be able to get a drain, and I was just figuring putting in about, I think I'd figured initially about four inches of, you know, basically millings that they would put in, basically roll it to get a nice, you know, fairly smooth surface. Is it going to be a surface like an asphalt surface? You know, probably not, but it seems like over time, I mean, those, those millings, you know, with traffic and stuff, they do set up pretty, pretty solid. I can't say that I've ever striped over millings to see how that's going to work, but.
Mr. Grassel?
What's the difference between us leaving it gravel now, Nancy, and if we put something that would be, we don't have it striped now, and it's ours?
It's gravel now, so it's existing, but once we make an improvement to it, or if we sell it to someone, or if we turn it into, you know, something where we would consider it public parking for use and the others, then we would want to bring it up to our standards, so. As long as, I mean, if you want to leave it gravel, it can stay gravel, you don't, you know, you're obviously not going to stripe gravel, but.
So what you're saying is if we go with the, if we even thought about doing the, the milled over whatever it is, we'd have to stripe it? Chalk?
Well, you called for the yellow epoxy striping with the bituminous millings, right?
Yeah, I, like I said, I did include it. Not sure when I put this together, this morning, you know, if we would be able to do that, but I thought, it was in my other estimates, so just kind of an apples-to-apple comparison, essentially between your surfaces, whether it's concrete, bituminous pavement, or the millings.
And other than concrete, we lose those every year when we do snow removal. I mean, that's, I mean, we do our parking lot here every two years, and, I mean, it really could be done every year, you know, because some of them do get pretty chipped up, but, I, I mean, I would say if we're going to put that down, the harder it gets and the more compacted it gets, the easier it will be to stripe it, I would think, so.
Henry?
Steve, are you going to have it smooth enough, snow removal may work out pretty good?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think in the end, I mean, I think it's going to be a, you know, it's going to be a better surface than the gravel surface you have there right now, you know, it would be sufficient for snow removal.
You'll, you'll level it in such a way there'll be drainage.
Yes.
Make a lot of difference, you don't bring the mud out in the straight J C, and you take some work away from, but it's going to increase, increase the appearance of the city, and appearance is very important.
Two, instead of striping, is putting those cement barriers or the ones that you just screw in, like, you know, just so that you designate spots, yeah.
Something delineate.
But what's there now?
Like what's there now? You can do that as well, just so long as either the spots are designated through striping or through some sort of apparatus, because that's what I would require of, you know, other businesses.
Some way to delineate parking or whatever.
Yes.
Can you tell us of a lot that's been done with these millings around the area?
I can't think of a parking lot, Mayor. I mean, I know we have, in a lot of the small communities, we've used it actually as our base underneath bituminous paving, and, and again, you know, before we pave that, I mean, it's a very hard, durable surface. I mean, it's almost like, with traffic and some heat, it's almost like it just kind of melds back together in a way, you know.
One of the reasons I brought it up, talked to him about it, was when I get to travel around and see the different horse barns and different things like that, and parking lots that people park in, some of the parking lots are this way, and they have a lot of traffic with the trailers and trucks, and I thought maybe this would be a way to look at it, to see if it's something that's feasible, that we still can be, get away from the potholes and get away from the mud, get away from the unpleasant look of it. So that's the reason why I brought it up this last time here, and just to take a look at it, and, I mean.
It's about one-fifth of the concrete and about one-third of the regular asphalt. Might be worth a shot.
Do we have funds for this?
Paul?
TIF?
You asked last, or last time, time before, whether or not TIF could be used. TIF is available for this type of improvement for a public facility that serves the TIF area.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess, yeah, my line of question is more involved in the funding side. I heard two different funding sources talked about, kind of co-mingled, one was TIF, one was CDBG, perhaps some leftover CDBG, was that? Was that?
I don't know how much is CDBG, I've got to be sure that it's usable for something like this, if possible, but I have one thing to add.
Now, this is a revolving fund, I know that because we do our snow removal and other things down the town with the replacing pavers, and we do get some lease money back into it, at least that's what Carla told me, is that there is some revenue that goes into that account every year.
I guess, I would like a clarification, whether it's from staff or this group, I guess, on if you're looking to use that type of funding, what, what's our balance in it? What's our past transaction, you know, not back into '97, but what's, what's been our inputs and outputs on it, so we have, so everybody has an idea of what that fund has done, and, you know, the magnitude of the fund. And I guess I'd also like to know how much of either CDBG or TIF money was used in the development of the building that is across the street. And we, I remember us putting quite a bit of TIF in, I don't remember what the mix was, but there was quite a bit put in there. And we don't have to, I don't expect anybody to come off the top of their head, but before we can make a decision on funding sources, I think that should be a, a part of that discussion.
I will tell you this, there's several hundred thousand dollars in TIF funds, there's several hundred thousand dollars in TIF funds.
At one point, we had to close a TIF district, correct? Okay, and these are?
And these are funds that are left at the end, we have to do a annual report, just the request, the report just came in, it's due like the end of August, and we'll try to make sure that we do that through the report.
So the TIF funds won't replenish, right? Because the district's closed?
Right, we have our last TIF dollars.
Okay.
But if I'm not mistaken, Paul, TIF has really, the requirements or the qualifications on what you can spend on are very well-defined, whereas.
Right, it's much more broad.
It's a little bit more open and.
TIF is more of like blight and, yeah, urban development.
So if something like this comes up, this would be a good opportunity to spend those funds, because that's what it's for, so.
I guess, that, my, my question basically stands, and like I said, I don't expect an answer tonight, but before we make a decision on which direction we want to go, and how we want to fund it, if we want to fund it, we should know the recent past of those funds in and around that area. I think that's pertinent. Thank you.
From a durability standpoint and future maintenance, I think we all sort of intuitively know that concrete is going to go 25-plus with minimal maintenance, asphalt probably after 10 is going to need some work. Do we have any sense at all how soon on bituminous millings we're going to come back and have to dress that up? Any idea?
I mean, it, it might be a possible, possibility that, you know, even on an annual basis, you got to, you know, add some millings, you know, do a little bit of blading, but, you know, I don't, I don't anticipate major maintenance work to keep this in shape. One thing I did do some checking on too, I know it got brought up at the last meeting, just about utilities underneath that lot, and did do some checking with our electrical department, and it appears that any utilities are kind of in the alley, what I'd call almost on the south side of the VFW there, and they kind of run, I'm going to call them almost east-west. There is no utilities right underneath this parking lot area. So, just for future reference, I guess, because I know, I think the last work session, I think Mr. Mickelson kind of mentioned, there might have been utilities right underneath that parking lot, but.
Anybody else have any thoughts or questions or comments?
One last thought. It might turn out that this, if this goes well, the bituminous millings could turn out to be a good base for an asphalt overlay in the future, right?
Yep.
With minimal prep, you could lay asphalt out, you'd think, maybe?
Possibly. I mean, the only thing I was, you know, in my asphalt estimate, I was figuring, you know, more gravel base to make sure we had a good base here. Here, I probably wouldn't worry about it as much, because all we're going to do is kind of peel off some of the gravel that's there and just add the millings to it, so, you know, just trying to keep costs down again.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it, sir. Anybody else have anything on that? Thank you. That's it. I'll move on to number four, request to plant trees. Mr. Olson's here.
Water and Light Department has.
Steve, you want to make sure?
Looked into some tree development in the spillway north of 23rd. Mr. Mickelson has had some past employment that has gotten some good results as far as possibly getting some grants, and planting trees on the north side of the spillway to reduce sediment into the bottom of that, and it's, it looks like it's a real good project. We're still working on what the soil, poke soil water conservation group to get real numbers as far as how much sediment is going to be reduced, and with that, after we get all that put together, we would like to, to get approval of council to move forward at this, and present it to the Bowser Group for possible application to get granted 85, 75% of that, and we do a 25% in-kind to follow up with maintenance and whatnot with that project.
One question I have for you, Jeff, and forgive me if I'm wrong, was, the original proposal was at a north end, was it moved to the south side of it? Do you remember, or?
It was moved to the south side, and with the poke water conservation, they moved it to the north.
Okay.
They thought it would be more feasible to get the grant from the Bowser people.
Okay.
Because it would be reducing sediment going down into the spillway.
Down into the, from the north?
Yeah.
Okay. I was wondering, because I'm like, because sort of it is. Okay.
Just like to make a comment.
Sure.
I think one of the important thing is if we can get this, it will help us sell lots up there, there'll be less problems with snow, with snow up there drifting and so forth, and the aesthetics will improve, it'll, it'll help the appearance of the golf course also, which is Fort Nassett, north side of the city. And if you can visualize what it'll be like, if, when you're going south to Fargo on the right-hand side, you have those nice pine trees there, they really look nice. Matter of fact, if you drive out in the point in the rural part, there's a lot of nice shelter belts out there, beautiful area. So I, I think from the north side of the city, when the people come down 220, and they go down 23rd the other way, driving over 220, you've got a whole different appearance.
I know that.
And it kind of makes everybody feel a little warmer.
I know that the landlord's been talked to already, they're on board around there, so initial, I think, contact by Keith, and I, I know I talked to one of them, but I think they're on board with it too, for soil conservation for them, for some of their areas.
I could interject too, this is part of a conversation that we had quite a few months ago, actually, in ways that our Water and Light Department and the City of East Grand Forks can partner in ways that, you know, they have certain things that they can do, and if you're leveraging grant money to get this done, and then in-kind some labor to put it in, I think it's really great. Keith was excited back when we talked about it in the first place, and he thought, you know what, I think we can move on this. And so I'm really proud of the work that you guys have done, because it takes a long time to ramp this up, a lot of planning, a lot of detail work, and it just evidence of the good partnership that we have with Water and Light, so thank you.
Welcome.
Anybody else have anything? Mr. Demers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd too like to applaud Mr. Mickelson and Olson for your work on it, the board. I think, I've, I've long said that this, what this town really needs, especially aesthetically, is, is a lot more trees. I would, I don't want to count this as a win yet, because it isn't done, but when it is a win, I'd, I'd encourage everybody involved to, to look at it as a win and, and double or triple down and look for projects that are bigger. I've said in the past, I think we have a site where we're decommissioning ponds that we could use in conjunction with the conservancy or any other group to start, you know, some sort of a nursery for, large-scale nursery for, for trees around the area and in the city. I think it would be a huge benefit. That ground is going to be fertile, I believe, and, and wet, and you're not going to have to worry so much about, you know, worrying about the dry and worrying about watering them as much, so I think it's, it may be a good job, or a nice spot that we use that area for something beneficial while it's in storage, maybe for something down in the future, so. I, like I said, I, I think this is a great program, much needed, and let's get it done and work on the next one. Thank you.
For you, Paul.
I know, I'm in that neighborhood, and I know my neighbors are, got a little excited when I mentioned we might have some trees to the north of us, because we've got nothing, it's just blowing in on us all the time. It's hard to get the snow removed, let me tell you. So, yeah, I'd welcome it.
Anybody else have anything on that? See you on Thursday. Thanks, Mr. Olson.
Thank you.
Number five, BCZ tax credits to benefit smaller business. Mr. Gordy?
A few months ago, I was talking with a newer business in town, and they said, you know, when they improved their property in Grand Forks, Grand Forks came up to them and gave them a check for the improvements they'd made on their property. Don't you have something? No, we don't have something, and nor do we budget for anything like that. So I started thinking about ways that we might be able to do this, and particularly if we could stretch our tax dollars further. So I talked with the EDA in February, and I've been talking with our specialist council, Kennedy and Graven, since then, and we've determined that we can use border cities enterprise-owned tax credits to give a one-time tax credit to businesses that have chosen to invest, especially the smaller businesses, that have chosen to invest and build a building over here, or in some way improve their property in ways that conform to what that border cities enterprise zone requires. So what you have in the packet are the criteria for the program, and we'd like to move forward with this and be able to use it. They're small amounts, but it is something that says you're important to us.
Any other questions, Mr. Gordy?
Oh, excuse me.
So no questions, Chris? Appreciate it.
Thanks, Paul. Thank you.
Going to be in a most new journey.
Move.
Move. I agree, I was talking back to us all day. Hi. All right.
[laughter]
Then Brad would, Brad would go. You gotta start watching him a little closer.
Watching as close as I can.
Yep.